Have a seat, please. I'd like to welcome everybody to our March 23rd, 2023 Commissioner meeting. All items or all times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commission Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation pursuant to NRS 241-0153B2. I'll call the meeting to order. Patsy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please, Jamie, and I salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. We did have an Austin Airport meeting on the 13th. We now have Wi-Fi. Actually, the Skyfire came out and did the modem in our dish, and Oasis was there to check everything out. So that's the first, and we're excited about that. On the 16th, we did have a Kingston Board meeting I attended, and they're looking for the date for their big fundraiser, which is the picnic, and usually they have that set, but they have some weddings going on in the park, so they haven't decided on a date yet. We're looking for, make sure we have enough volunteers.
Thank you. Kathy?
I had attended the search and rescue and the convention of tourism. There's a standard meeting happening.
Thank you. JR?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Okay, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. I don't have much to report, per se, but I do want to give some credit here because I got an email the other day that I think it's important for the Commission to be aware of. And it's for Laken and the job that she's done. And I quote, this is what it says, or a piece of it. "I want to let you know how much I appreciate you, your open communication, and all the hard work to keep Lander County on track. When I started, Lander County was one of my most troubled counties. However, with your due diligence, things are stellar." So I just wanted Laken to have credit because our auditors throughout the state, if you look at other counties' audits, you will see that this one is doing great, and a big part of that is what Laken's doing there. It's a group effort, but leading the charge is Laken. So I just want to make the community aware and give a thanks to Laken.
Nice. Good job. Anymore? That's it? Okay, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of March 23rd, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of February 9th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of February 23rd, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of March 9th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of March 15th, 2023 Special Budget Workshop Minutes. Six, approval of March 16th, 2023 Special Budget Workshop Minutes. And seven, approval of payroll change requests.
I would like to pull out the Agenda Notice, please, and then approve, I mean, a motion to approve number two, our minutes of February 9th, and number seven, the payroll change request.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one?
On the agenda, we do need to amend that. We're taking off number eight. Is that correct?
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the corrected agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. Item one, for discussion of possible action, to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. Yeah, we'll pull checks 218986 and 219077.
For my checks, I would make a motion that we pay the remainder of the bill.
Yeah, we have a motion. And JR, second. If all in favor, say aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion, we approve checks 218986 and 219077.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, and I abstain there made to my employer, Pointess. We'll go to item two, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the renewal, amendment, and modifications between Lander County and Lander County Lawn Care Grounds Maintenance Agreement, which expires on October 31st, 2023. This modification is to increase the current contract from $120,814.08 to an amount not to exceed $145,000. New terms will take effect July 1st, 2023 through October 31st, 2026.
Now, as I'm sure the Commission can see in the backup, this contract isn't due for renewal right now, and Marilyn is here. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get to speak for you all the way, Marilyn. You'll have to come up, sorry. But Ms. Marilyn is asking for this. She hasn't had an increase in 16 years. She's been doing this contract and has not had one increase. And we're asking for it now because she has to purchase some lawn equipment that is pretty expensive, and she's not sure that she wants to maybe make that dive, but I'll let her take it from there.
Hit that green button, please.
Write this in.
So it turns green. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I have not had any raise in 16 years, and it's definitely taken effect. I'm okay with, you know, when everybody else is okay on a certain amount of raise, but a little bit. Something, something to help out a little bit. My mowers are, I'm gonna have to buy new mowers this year and stuff, but anyway.
This had a curiosity note that that has to do with it. How much do those cost?
Mowers? Okay, so my big mower went up, went up $6,000. It's $14,000 for my big mower, and my little mower is $7,000. And like I said, it went up $6,000, so it's like at $19,000 now. Yeah. But I like John Deere, so I don't know, you know?
How often do you have to replace them?
I've been replacing them every, this'll be six years on this one, on these, and hours are really high, so I definitely gotta do it.
You must be doing good maintenance on it.
Yeah, oh, yes. John Deeres definitely hold their own. I trade them in, and then, yeah, they hold their own, but.
I make a motion, we approve the contract and the increase not to exceed the $145,000 a year.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion from Kathy, second from JR. All in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into item three, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the contract renewal agreements for all Lander County health benefits and any other matters properly related thereto. Morning, Tim.
Good morning. Tim Holland, LP Insurance, here to discuss the renewal with Anthem and DSP, and then go over a couple other items. After years of rate passes, Anthem is asking for a 5.3% increase on the $500 deductible PPO and the $2,500 deductible HSA. They're asking for a 4.7% increase on a $2,000 out-of-pocket max Anthem dental. They're looking for a rate pass on their vision plan and a rate pass on their life and life buyout.
What was that increase again, Tim?
For the medical, it's gonna be a 5.3% increase.
So when you said the deductible, so is that basically being passed on for the people that are covered? It's an increase for them, or is that an increase that the county pays?
Both. It's a, yeah, the employee, the four tiers. The employee that the county covers, and you have employee, spouse, employee, and children, and family.
I'd like to point out, it's pretty, it's been pretty good. I don't think we've had any increases for what, the last?
Quite a few years now.
Quite a few years, yes, so.
And the cost, I was gonna, I've been pondering about this too, which is the cost of increase is not bad considering the cost of medication is absolutely ridiculous for them to cover, so it's greatly appreciated. This insurance has been very good for someone who utilizes it. The medication, yes, it's just ridiculous, the cost, so I do appreciate that a lot. So thank you.
Yeah, so traditionally, pharmacy benefits for every $100 of medical spend was $8 to $12. In recent years, it's gone up to $28 to $32, while all other things have also increased. The biggest one we see is actually nursing. There's such a shortage of nurses that traveling nurses have become an absolute premium. That rate has gone up tremendously, too. But they actually approved, FDA approved a drug for $3.5 million for a single dose last month.
So how have our claims actually been, our current claims over the last year?
It did increase. The reason we're able to get those rate passes is because, one, the funding mechanism, which the county does. But we've had five claims that have gone over about half of the premium paid for the last year, and we do see an increase trending up this next year. So I think I can beat them up, but I think the 5.3 would be very smart to fund that because we do see five claims this year that are gonna have some good cost to them.
They, Liz just handed out this spousal carve-out affidavit. Why are we making that change for them?
Because you have the best plan anywhere around, and I am seeing a trend that spouses are waving off their employer coverage to come onto this one, and there's generally one reason they do that, and that's for utilization. So my job is to protect your plan.
And? How does it work for somebody that has it, but they use it as a secondary, not as a primary?
That's absolutely fine. We just want them to be on their, we want them to be on their employer's policy first, and then when that kind of taps out, then this can come in as a secondary. Again, we use this as an example, that your competition has always been the mines.
Right.
They've had the best health plan ever. Now they're looking at a $7,000 HSA that they don't fund very well, so people are gonna come to yours.
Aren't there rules that guide that, though, as far as, I mean, if you're employed? Isn't there something that states that that is your primary? How can they, oh, there's not?
No.
Wow.
I had always assumed that as well.
I'd always assumed that, yeah.
No, they can wave off any employer-sponsored coverage and become dependent on this plan.
Can't we, as Commissioners, put in place that, is that what this is basically saying? You have, I haven't read yours, so.
Yeah, so this is basically saying, if they get insurance through their employer, their spouse, then they have to be on that plan. They can be on ours, but as a secondary here. So this is just protecting us because people are dumping their main plan and coming here.
And I know that some of the mines are having some issues with some of their insurance, and so, yeah.
It's fine to have them on as a secondary. Average spend is about $4,500 per individual for a plan year, which they are utilizing medicine, especially with pharmacy. And that just states that, you know, if they have a deductible of $3,000 and an out-of-pocket max of maybe $7, they're going to exhaust that before the lander plan kicks in.
And I think what the other insurance companies are doing, because they send out basically an affidavit at the beginning of the year, asking if you have an insurance. And as soon as their insurance knows that they have a secondary, then they really stop paying. And so then it's the secondary that comes into play. I noticed that, which I never really put that in perspective until doing this, going, I didn't even know they could. So, yeah, the insurance just says, well, we're not paying. We'll pay $2 on that $500 bill, and then leaves it up to the secondary to pay, so.
Right, and this is very common. The state of Nevada does it. And it used to be very, it used to be important to have a primary and a secondary before the Affordable Care Act, when there are actually caps on limits of what insurance would cover. Now there are no caps. So having a secondary sometimes really isn't necessary. It's an unnecessary cost. You can just put that money towards your primary because it's never going to run out.
So are these final, or you're still negotiating?
These are negotiable. This is, Anthem came out with, I feel, a very fair renewal.
So, I mean, if we approve this today, I mean, it's still possible that you might get a little bit lower rate?
I could ask.
That's pretty cheap.
I doubt it. I think that it's very, they've done very well.
We want to stay with them. I mean, I like the consistency, and we've all been very pleased with the carrier, but I know that's what you do, and you do a good job, so.
This is their initial offering. I beat them up a little bit. We've had months of negotiations to get to this point. Is this Anthem's final final? No? Is it very fair renewal? I believe it is.
Okay.
After meeting with Tim multiple times, I would recommend that we take this, knowing what's gonna come. There is a chance that we will get hit with a higher percentage if we do not accept the five.
Oh, I think we want to do that, but what I'm saying is I'm just wondering whether this is the absolute or whether he'll still come back and say, we cut a little bit here and there.
I'm at your direction.
Thank you.
And I do walk the building a lot, and I ask everybody, are you happy? Do you have any issues? I did it this morning, and somebody said, I didn't know I could use my HSA card for that. And I said, you can use it for everything. And so I think your employees are very happy. And if they're not banging on Liz's door.
Oh, and I have not heard any complaints.
Yeah.
So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Or a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the Lander County Health Care and Fitness with the increase. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion from Kathy, a second from Mike. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, very lovely.
Do you have to vote on the carve-out, or are you good?
Yeah.
May I, Dr. Wood, turn this back to Mike, and you? Is that what I do?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna attach to our enrollment.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the MOU between Lander County and Bureau of Land Management regarding the sage grouse resource management plan.
So this I put on the agenda. It's probably something that I could sign without the Commission's approval, but I feel that it gets us at the table with the BLM on some of the things that are moving forward. And I want the Commission to be aware of it and make sure that you guys approve anything that puts us at the table.
Do I have any questions on that?
I do. Does this, just from reading the, I don't remember, the documents that, or Matt had hired?
Oh, no, no, that will be on an upcoming meeting. That was your request.
Does this affect anything that has to do with that at all?
No.
Okay.
Completely separate.
So with our, now that we are finally going to be a cooperating agency on this, it seems that they've missed us a couple times on a couple things, so this is, this is good. But it looks like we're still on the same wavelength to try and keep it from being listed as an endangered species.
I would hope that we were always on that.
We're still on the same.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, I don't know that the Board has ever directed anything different than that.
No, I don't mean the Board, I mean BLM.
Oh, yeah, and it's all we can do is sit at the table and make our requests. And I'm not, I don't know what the BLM's recommendations are, but I would imagine that they wouldn't be for that. I can't speak for them, maybe John can. I don't know.
Yeah, go on up, Tim.
Morning, John Shervy, Field Manager, Battle Mountain, Beyond District. So I have to admit, I was here for the item on the Robertson Project, and I don't even know, I didn't even ask her about this item yesterday. So did this MOU come from our office or from the BLM State Office?
No, it came from your guys' office.
Okay, I'm a little out of the loop on this. Well, anyway, the sage grouse plan, we're going through another revisions in the West, not just Nevada, or not just our district, but the first sage grouse plan was done on a national basis back in 2015. And it was, the decision was signed in, yeah, in 2015. When we've had changes in the administration, there was another revision done in 2019. Then with litigation, that was, we were pushed back to 2015. So we've been under this 2015 plan for a while, and now they're going through another revision that I think we'll, probably within the next year, year and a half, we'll see another version of this sage grouse plan for the Western, for the Western states. So this MOU specifically, I'm not exactly sure what it is. But overall, the plan itself, to your question, is yes, we wanna manage these lands. It's got priority habitat given throughout the, throughout the state, where there's priority sage grouse habitat. There's higher restrictions on what can be done on the land, what we can authorize. There's timing restrictions, there's occupancy restrictions. Then there's, it's graded down from a priority habitat to general, to other, to no habitat. So it's all in response to trying to maintain a good habitat for the sage grouse to thrive.
So we're still on the same track, anyway?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you, John, appreciate it.
I mentioned the horses destroyed the habitat for the sage grouse. Because I know a lot of the water holes and stuff that used to have sage grouse on them, they're all mud holes now.
Yeah, so as you know, across the West, we're dealing with large wild horse and burrow numbers and above our AML appropriate management level on, in all our HMA's, for the most part. There's a few herd management areas that have been gathered down to their AML numbers, but the majority of them have numbers, population numbers way above the AML. Now, we, across the state, across the West, we have to prioritize also what herd management areas that are, we can gather. And that's, for the most part, that's outside of our local control. It's directed, we provide our priorities on what needs to get done, gathered to the BLM State Office, and then the Headquarters Office is the one that controls what gets done on the ground. And just so you know, we do have, the HMA's that are in Lander County are definitely prioritized for the Battle Mountain District. Right now, we're working on the Roberts HMA to get gathered in Eureka County, but after that, we're looking at New Pass, Ravenswood, which is to the south. I'm not sure where you were talking about, but then, but then South Shoshone, which is probably what you're looking at, which has got a lot of horses, is also part of that, the priority for us. But it's really, what we can gather is outside of our hands.
Thanks, John. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on the issue?
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU between Lander County and Bureau of Land Management regarding the sage grouse resource management plan.
I'll second it.
Patsy made the motion, JR second. If all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we'll move into item five, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the community project funding grant agreement for the Austin Community Center in an amount of $638,000.
So this is a grant we've been discussing. There may be a modification that will come with this grant, and if it is, we will bring it back to the Commission, making sure that we can build in a different location. That was one thing that, you know, has been talked about. And I know the Porker Group has said that they have cleared that, but I don't see the language, so we may have to make a modification to that, and if it does, we'll bring it back.
Well, you're pretty limited on space where it's at currently.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the issue? Okay, is there a motion?
A motion, we approve the community project funding grant agreement for the Austin Community Center in the amount of $638,000.
Okay, Mike made the motion.
I'll second it.
JR, second. If all in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. We'll move to item six, presentation by Dr. Fred Steinman, including, but not limited to, Economic Development, Annual Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, CEDS, for Lander County's five-year plan. Morning.
So the presentation is going here, right?
Morning, Sheldon.
How do you do?
Good.
Just brought extra copies, just in case, so. Save a treat.
Well, thank you very much. For the record, Fred Steinman, Director, University Center for Economic Development at the College of Business. While Sheldon pulls up the presentation, of course Sheldon Mudd, also with me today, Executive Director of the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority. It's a pleasure to be here this morning and present a general overview of the Second Annual Update and Evaluation of the Current Five-Year 2020-2025 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy specific to Lander County. In way of just some general background and information about the SEDS process, the development of this five-year comprehensive economic development strategy began in 2019, primarily at the request of Nevada Gold Mines, who had funded the initial development of what would become a regional five-year SEDS for the four-county NNRDA region. As we began that process in 2009, working again with critical stakeholders, representatives of each of the four counties, as well as representatives from the NNRDA, kind of made sense to first begin with the development of community-level and county-wide comprehensive economic development strategies. So that process rendered seven separate strategic economic development plans as comprehensive economic development strategies, one being for all of Lander County. And again, that was a process that was primarily initiated at the request of Nevada Gold Mines to ensure that communities and counties and the NNRDA region itself were eligible to apply for various federal non-entitlement competitive economic development dollars across the spectrum of the entire federal government. Not sure if the, oh, there it is. Next slide, please. Just in terms of what the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is, SEDS is a very specific type of strategic economic development plan administered by the U.S. Economic Development Administration of the Department of Commerce. The idea primarily is to encourage local communities, The idea primarily is to encourage local communities, you know, Battle Mountain, Austin, Kingston, counties like Lander County, to think about opportunities at the regional level for us here in northeastern Nevada. How can local communities and counties contribute to broader economic growth and diversification, but also how local communities and counties can drive regional economic development and growth as well? Again, as I had mentioned, the SEDS itself is a bit of a requirement coming out of the 2010 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Back then, it was realized that there was more demand for federal funds, especially in the competitive, non-entitlement economic development world, than the federal government had funds to give out. So they essentially said in the 2010 American Recovery Investment Act, hey, if you want to go after these types of dollars across the federal government, you have to have a SEDS in place. So again, part of that process and part of the rationale of having this is just to be eligible to go after those dollars. Excellent. I've already touched upon the process of how we got to today. Again, the local community and county-level planning process, beginning in the summer of 2019, and as we moved throughout the year, transitioned into the development of the regional SEDS. This round of annual updates and evaluations is the second, really covering the year of 2022, as we had completed an annual update and evaluation in 2001. Before you, in your agenda packets, is a University Center for Economic Development Technical Report. The number is, you said, 2022-23-12, which is again, the specific targeted update for the Lander County SEDS. Next slide. Part of the SEDS process is identification of characteristics and conditions of economic distress. There are three general areas of economic distress that communities can be eligible for, and then apply for additional federal funds to target economic development projects. The first is a unemployment rate eligibility requirement. Communities and areas that in the last 24 months of available data have an unemployment rate that is 1% or greater than the national average. The second one is per capita income standard. Communities are eligible as economically distressed if they are 80% or less of the national per capita income level for a 24-month period. Kind of a double-edged sword. Most of our communities in Nevada, especially in the non-metro ones, and that goes for Lander County, are not eligible as economically distressed using the unemployment and the per capita income characteristics. Certainly, that's very beneficial. That's an indication that you're at or near full employment as a community. People that want to find jobs are finding jobs, and incomes are very high, certainly driven by the primary industry sectors here in Lander County and the region. But the double-edged sword is, again, you have to look for other things as it pertains to economic distress. In the SEDS document, both the original one in 2019 for Lander County, but of course, the annual update really goes into detail on the third characteristic, which are special needs. And you'll see in the goals, objectives, and actionable items moving forward for the next year, really, the dominant special need is workforce development. And as that relates to the need regionally and locally as well for additional housing to support workforce growth, certainly a critical element needed to support continued growth of primary and developing industry sectors, the need for additional education and childcare services, again, a primary characteristic and condition of supporting additional workforce development, and then the development of additional healthcare services ranging from expanded basic to more advanced, both physical and mental healthcare services. So those three areas are kind of the general extrapolation of the special need as it relates to workforce development, just for Lander County and also for the entire region. Next slide. The existing Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Lander County in the annual update contains a strategic economic development vision. This has not changed since 2019, when we initially developed it. The vision statement is again, very much focused as a kind of a marching order for the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority and various strategic economic development partners in the county, to really focus on targeted economic development approaches that really benefit the individual communities across the county, not trying to do a one-size-fit-all approach to community and economic development efforts for the entire county, but certainly focusing on the longer-term goal of enhancement and preservation of quality of life for individuals who already live and work here within the county. Of course, part of the vision is certainly looking at opportunities for new business creation and attraction, and existing business retention and expansion efforts, really focusing again, on continued diversification of the county's economic base, and really, the economic base of the entire region, while certainly pursuing opportunities to grow and enhance existing base industries in both agriculture and mining and natural resource extraction, and in those areas, really focusing on closing gaps within the supply chain of those industry sectors, trying to capture more of that value-added production to either support mining and agricultural activity in the county and the region, or to expand further down the supply chain to end consumption by individual consumers. Excellent. Working with Sheldon, the Executive Director and stakeholders in Lander County, we spent several months evaluating existing goals pertinent to the Lander County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It was generally agreed that the goals focused on increasing tourism and some targeted infrastructure related to the airport here in Battle Mountain were completed enough, where really doesn't really require additional direct attention by the NNRDA at this point, although certainly continued infrastructure development to support growth in and around the airport, and continuing to grow and bolster tourism and hospitality, and specifically, outdoor recreation and activities will still remain a priority of the SEDS, the NNRDA and its partners moving forward. Really, for the next year, the top four goals that the NNRDA and its partners have kind of determined that we'll focus on, again, continued focus on infrastructure improvement, specifically related to broadband and other telecommunications opportunities, continuing to focus on critical infrastructure related to the industrial park, to support new business creation and attraction efforts that are kind of already in the pipeline, continue to work to develop the multi-use vehicle testing facility to support, again, broader tourism and hospitality activities, and then also work with key agricultural producers within the county, looking at both alternative agricultural manufacturing opportunities and closing additional gaps within the value network and supply chain of the ag sector. The remaining goals are still relatively important, but they are not necessarily top priority moving forward, although goals five through nine, again, are very much focused on workforce development, identifying opportunities with the Lander County School District, other local and regional educational partners to continue to enhance an already very strong career and technical education program in Lander County, but also look at other opportunities and ways to enhance and grow the existing workforce within the county. The next slide, the remaining goals, 10A through 13, again, some of these have kind of fallen back in priority, just primarily because of broader, you know, macro political questions and decisions made by other firms and other agencies, you know, too high up on the food chain to really, you know, influence the process here. However, that said, it was collectively agreed amongst the stakeholders that were involved in creating and completing this annual update, that these goals still, you know, represent a degree of priority for the NNRDA to pursue in conjunction with the county and other local economic development partners, if the opportunities present themselves over the next year and over the remaining two to three years within the existing five-year strategic planning horizon. That's kind of the, the presentation in a nutshell. Again, the annual update process was begun, I believe, in November of last year, continued over the holidays. The Executive Director of the NNRDA had produced and put together an online survey that was sent to economic development partners and stakeholders here in Lander County, really, again, to evaluate the goals and to reprioritize them for the coming year. Certainly happy to answer any questions or inquiries that you may have regarding this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there any public comment or any questions? Public? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move into item seven. Updating possible action from Pam Harrington on Robertson Mine Expansion Project and any other matters directly related thereto. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning. Can I come up? Sorry, Jen comes up too. She's just ready to go.
I'm ready.
Okay, thanks. Pam Harrington, for the record, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for speaking with me about a project I've been working on for you guys for, geez, it's only been about a month, and a lot's been going on, so it's good to talk in a public forum, so we can all talk together. Not allowed to talk about a lot of detail of what's, I've been looking at for cooperating agency in a public setting, but what I wanted to bring forward is things that are not there. So with emissions, I can talk about those. And you should have in your packet a letter that I wrote to Director Raby. Since we were so late in the game here, I'll go back a little, because you guys have a lot on your plates, you might not remember all of this stuff. July of last year was a kickoff meeting to start the cooperating agency part of the process for the proposed Robertson Mine. And when I heard about it, I found out Lander County wasn't there as a cooperating agency in Singer County, it's a big deal. So talked to Bert a bit on it, and it turned out that the BLM didn't have Bert's email address, so you guys never got an invite to be part of the process. So months went by. When we finally engaged, and I offered to help with this, because you guys know I do a lot of this for my job, it was February, and they had already basically submitted the packet to the State Office to go forward with a notice of intent, and we weren't really able to engage in the process in a timely manner, for sure. So I waded through a lot of documents here, and I noticed there was, to me, three things that were missing from the packet that it would be nice if the cooperating agencies could really delve into before it moves forward into the scoping process, because that's why we have this cooperating agency component to the process, so you get better documents for everyone moving forward. And that's what this is addressing. The three things that I thought that needed to be addressed before it went forward with the notice of intent phase, one was the landowners and residents that are adjacent to the project are not mentioned in the, in the whole document, and that will change many parts of the document to say that there's, as an example, there's a family with five children under 11 years old that live within one mile of the project. And one where you're talking about air emissions and everything, everything associated with it, that should be integrated in and analyzed for all the people that live close. So that, to me, was a showstopper, that that needs to be put into, into the documents. And then the other two that I just listed here, I mean, there's a lot of places that we'll engage as a county as it moves forward. There's more time to, it's not like this is the end, but it's the beginning, and to move forward without these components, I thought was, I, I wouldn't sign it off if I was Director Raby, to move forward until these things were in there. So I just put them forth, and the BLM office here in town, I mean, they were moving forward, we got in late, but I'm asking that we have a pause in the notice of intent section until we can be inserted properly as these things. So the second one was just baseline data for the streams, because there's two streams that are impacted by the project, and when you read the documents, it says it wasn't requested to have baseline data, and I think that's needed to, again, have a, a starting point to this whole process. And then third was, see, they decide if they're going to have preferred alternatives, or some alternatives aren't going to be analyzed because of certain reasons. And one of them, to me, I thought would be good is to consider the alternative, partially backfilling one of the pits that they weren't going to backfill, because it'll fill up with water, and then we'll have another pit lake. And I thought that would be good to go ahead and do the whole analysis of that, because that's a lot of water that's just wasted in pit lakes, and I would like to see the analysis done, just for that to be considered as an alternative for partially backfill. So I bring that to you guys. If you would like to send this letter, I think it's in the county's best interest, and me representing you, I went through all that, those documents, and that's what I bring forth today. But I'm glad John's here, too, because you guys have done a lot of work on it. Like I said, I know we're late coming in, but these seem impactful. Like I said, if I was Director Raby, I would want to see that stuff before I signed it to go forward.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Is there any questions for Pam or John?
Well, I, I appreciate the research on it. Thank you, Pam, and it never hurts to ask, especially since they know we were late because we weren't invited, so as soon as we found out and we said, hey, we're here, we want to be cooperating agency, and so hopefully, they will look at that. All we can do is ask.
I would like the Commission to know, and the community to know, that it's not the BLM, to fault the BLM that we weren't, they were sending them emails to Keith's email, the old county manager's email, so they were noticing the county, but none of them emails were forwarded on because that email was shut down. So once, once we got on that, then, you know, that's, that's where we are. So it's not to fault the BLM, they were sending their, they were doing their due diligence, reaching out to us. We just didn't have that email, so.
I got a question. These, this Robinson Mine, is it going to be mostly oxide or sulfide?
I, I believe it's mostly oxide or non-acid generating. I don't have the specifics.
Because of several, the pit lakes around here have a lot of sulfides in them, you'll never put a fish in there if you've got lots of sulfides.
Yeah, the Phoenix Mine has acid generating rock, for sure. When I looked at the soil surveys and the samples that they used, I don't know how much we talk about this now, but it was, I think, don't quote me on this, 40% possibly acid generating. It was 20% was acid generating and 20% not known, but that's getting into the weeds a little bit, but it's not all there, but some of it is.
But, yeah, I, I'd like to weigh in, too, before you guys vote on this, and I hadn't had a chance to coordinate with, with Pam on this. I just saw the letter yesterday, and some of this I'm going to counter where, where you're coming from on this letter. Now, overall, we're, we're pleased with having Lander County play this role in, in this project or any future project like this. It's, it's really a new thing to have Lander County at this, at this level, and ultimately, it's a good thing, produces better outcomes, and Pam's role has been getting up to speed with a lot of information in a short period of time. So overall, yes, I think it's a, we're, the, the project is moving in the right direction with the county's role in this. And part of what Bert just brought up, it's a little misleading in this first paragraph. Yes, there were some miscommunications early on with our default email going to Keith. We've been in contact with the county as early as June, or last June, July timeframe, we've had some correspondence back and forth, but it, it, just the way this process has worked, we didn't get this a formalized role for the county until February, but, but there's been information on when we're having kickoff meetings and all that given to the county. So that's, so there's that, and also, when you're looking at our process, that we're, our permitting process, we are very, very early on in the process. We put a heavy emphasis on pre-planning in our district. We've got such a heavy workload, especially mining, but for any project, it could be solar, geothermal, or whatever, we put a heavy emphasis on the proponent in pre-planning. We push a lot to the proponent to perfect their application, which then helps us fine-tune the impacts at a very early stage. So overall, we haven't even begun the public process for these, for this permit. That's what this NOI stage is. That is the very first stage that notifies the public in a formal sense and soliciting public input. So that, to me, we're, you're, you're a little early in this approach to ask for a delay. We've got our own delays inherently in our process, and right now, this NOI is, is a package that we put together with as much information as that's required. We put this together, it goes to the State Office, it goes to our National BLM Office, it goes to the department, it's got multiple levels of review before we can formalize that NOI, that, that NOI stage. So there's plenty of time to still work on, on these issues that you're pointing out right now that are outstanding. now that are outstanding. Right now, one of the issues we're undertaking a study right, you know, getting that in the documentation right now. So, the other one doesn't happen, on the alternatives, doesn't happen until you get, you're at that NOI stage, when we start talking about alternatives, pit backfills. So, delaying this won't even allow us to move the needle on that type of analysis. And then certainly, the, like this first one, it's a little general, so I'm not exactly sure what the intent of that one is, but certainly that's, these are things that we can get clarified as we move forward. My take, my recommendation on this right now is to, to possibly hold off on this. If you're not happy with the progress and the understanding on where these issues are addressed, then go out with a letter like this. But right now, I would recommend for everybody's information sharing and getting up to speed is to hold a agendized workshop. We could be there, NGM could be there, we can have our third-party contractor there, so we can share all the information that we can at that point. And then also, and then also, you'll be able to get a better understanding, certainly on our, on the steps that are, that we go through to acquire all this information. That's my take. I think this is a little early to be going out to our state director, ask it for a delay when the NOI takes care of some of this stuff that's being pointed out as being outstanding. So, if you still don't feel that your information is getting put into the record, or the studies aren't being done, then there's always another opportunity to request from our state director, request a delay or a further, deeper dive into the resource concerns that you've got. That's my take on it. There's, you can always send, we don't move fast, as you know, so there's plenty of opportunities to weigh in.
My question is, if the email wasn't going to Bert, who in the county was the BLM in contact with?
I think we, our default email, I think, was just went to Keith.
Well, then, but you had stated after that, that, you know, you guys had, aside from that, you guys had been in contact with the county, so I'm just wondering who that is. Who you were in contact?
I don't know if it's a general email that goes to Bert, or if it's actually got your name.
So, somewhere, and I don't know exactly when in that timeframe that he just stated after, look back, is when they got in contact with me, and that's when I brought it, before the commission. And we had started discussing how we get at the table. So, then it took us a few months, we had, we brought another contractor, or contract to you guys to have another company oversee the whole thing, and we opted out of that. So, that's when we brought Pam on board. So, there's been a couple of months of just getting somebody on board to review that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think there's been, just, you know, on our part, we've been, you know, we didn't have the right contact, so there's, there was some miscommunication.
Once we've been in contact, we've had great communication. I am not familiar with the process or at what stage we weigh in on the process, and that's what we have to rely on Pam and John, obviously, for, so.
Pam?
Thanks. Chairman, yeah. Pam Harrington, for the record. I think the omissions are strong enough with the landowners and residents to put a pause on this and to start the notice of intent after they've done that analysis, and it's part of the packet that all of the cooperating agencies have looked at. And I don't see a problem with that at all. I think it's the right thing to do. And, I mean, like, I don't have much background in air quality, and I wouldn't do that for the county. EPA sits at this cooperating agency level, and I would want to have time to discuss the PM-10 and PM-2.5 particulate matter, is what that is, impacts to people that live right there, and a host of other things. That's why that is so vague, John, is because saying the impacts to residents and landowners is ubiquitous throughout all of the documents. And so, to me, to move forward with the notice of intent without any of that information in the original analyses is, like I said, I wouldn't sign it if it was up to me. And I've had some conversations, and I think we're in the right to do that. Even though we got in late, this way, we have the time to work as in the cooperating agency space, and I know it continues, John, I understand that for sure. But I want to have that emphasis for the county, that this matters. Otherwise, it kind of gets swept under the rug and everything moves forward and, you know, some of that will, I mean, we'll all still be talking for a long time yet. Like John said, it's true, this is the very beginning, but it is the beginning, and there's a process to get to the point of the NOI. And I don't think that the due diligence has been done and what has been provided to the cooperating agencies to analyze to get to this point.
So, what you're saying is that, so John is saying that to hold up before we have the analysis, doesn't really make sense, I see that point, but what you're saying is that, holding it up so that you have input that can become part of their analysis, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yep, you got it.
Yeah, and so, where we are, again, we are in a pre-planning stage, and we put a heavy emphasis on that. And it's really a super-focused group of stakeholders that are involved in this process, the county or counties, EPA, the state of Nevada through NDEP or NDAO, and the tribes. We have a, the key stakeholders are involved early on. And we try and get through the big concerns before we start the formal public process. And we've got the, we've got the time to still do that, to take care of the county's concerns, except maybe for these alternatives, which we're talking about on this, on this third item on your letter. And that's not saying that we still can't look at that at this stage, but some of these, the formal process doesn't kick in yet until we get, of alternatives, until we get to the NOI stage and beyond. So, there's time. We've already, like I said, we've already started looking at one of these requests. The other one, I know that we've already started revising some of the specific resources to take in the concern that Pam has brought up. So, I, this is, I'm not aware of this approach being done by any county at this stage. We can always get this, get these items addressed right now, or where we, the earliest possible time, and that's really right now. So, I, again, I'll state that if, it might be good to hold off, if you guys want, if the commissioners want, have a workshop in, where you can have a quorum, we can have our specialists, and Jim can provide their specialists. We've got contractors on board that can go through this. If you're not satisfied at that point, then there's no, there's, you can go forward with this type of request to the state director.
I think that might be a good idea, is have a workshop, because you're bringing all the cooperative agencies together, we can ask the hard questions. Because right now, it's just kind of a nutshell version that I understand, and I think it would give everybody a more in-depth understanding of what's actually taking place in the process.
I think the workshop is a good idea, because the concerns need to be heard from the get-go, and the only way that's going to happen if this letter is not sent in is by having a workshop. And that only way that I would agree that they shouldn't go, if they're all willing to come to the table and do a workshop, then I'm happy for that. If not, I think the big concern should be what's put out there first, because I think that, you know, the big concerns after the fact, yes, they're heard, but they are also monotoned out at some point. And I just think that if the workshop, I'm fully, I'm for that, if that can be done and accomplished, and if not, then go forward with the letter.
Chairman, I think we need both. We could do both. We don't have to not have a workshop if we send in the letter. The lender, letter puts us in position that these things need to be addressed and have a workshop. But if, I could concede to omission number three, if that wants to be done later, Eureka County put in the same thing, same request for three. So, if you want to not have that, the notice of intent, holding off on that, fine, but I think the citizens that were not included in this at the beginning, that needs to be taken care of. And having a workshop, I totally agree, we should have a workshop. One of the problems is the cooperating agency meetings that I'm attending for you guys now are exactly the same time as your meetings here. It's every other week, same timeframe, 11, I mean, we're going to go to that meeting in a little while. So, you can never sit in on those cooperating agency meetings when you're here. But I'm sure they can arrange a workshop at another time that works for you and...
Well, I just think if they're all, everything is discussed and brought forward at the workshop, then I just think that, then we all have the answers, we have, we have answers to everything ourselves, those things that you say that you can't say, well, we want to know, obviously, whatever that is that you can't, we want to know what that is before, at least I do, and what the workshop would have to be something different than what it is that you guys are going to, you know, it has to be something separate.
Yeah, there's legislation that Eureka County put forward, and I believe it was the last legislative session, and it was approved for the state, and that's for county commissioners to be able to meet outside of the public process with federal agencies on precisely this stuff. So, there's a good mechanism in place, if you guys want to take a deeper dive, and I think it would be really good if, at least we could have one of those. And then maybe even, if the weather ever gets better, take a tour out to, and NGM would be very happy to host you, I know, to take a look at things, if you want to do that.
All right, thank you, Pam. Are there any other questions?
For the record, Chair, I'm going to abstain from any discussion or vote in this matter at this time due to employment.
Okay, thank you for that disclosure. Is there any questions or comments from the public?
I have a question. If we submit that letter, John, and they, how does that affect this process as far as moving forward? What kind of timeframes, or how does that back off? Because I did have a meeting with the representative of the mine yesterday, and they are wanting to get this thing up and operational by 2026. He said that it'll employ 415 employees during operation, which is supposed to last nine years. 150 employees in the middle of that between now and then during the construction phase. And I just want to make sure that we aren't, you know, delaying something that would be beneficial to many people of the county, or potentially bring more revenue in as well, but doing our due diligence at the same time. So, I'm just curious as to how much time that would.
Yeah, this is a bit, I don't know. I, this, I don't recall a county or another agency having this type of request. So, I don't know what type of delay you could have to the overall process. Maybe nothing, but maybe there might be some ripple effect in the overall schedule. I'm not quite sure. And again, we have enough delays in our process that really don't, well, there's still time to address some of these things, even if we don't have workshops. But, yeah, I can't answer that for sure.
I mean, a workshop, could we get it set up and put together? And, I mean, how much time would we need to do that, to where we can get it back on a upcoming agenda?
Well, and we, and that's the, that is what the legislation that Pam is referring to, it's a one exception to the open meeting law, where the commission can convene as, together as one, and not have to put it out to the public to review these things that are, you know, that are protected by some of the clauses and some of the confidentiality that isn't allowed to the public yet. That's one of the exceptions. So, we could, we could have that whenever they could put that together.
So, we wouldn't have to post notice or anything like that?
But that won't, wouldn't even, if that passes now, it wouldn't even go into effect?
No, it already passed.
Oh, it already passed?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't know that. Sorry. No, I thought you said that it was coming out, and it, okay.
Yeah, that's good, actually, that's good. I mean, you can plan this in a quicker timeframe. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Oh, really, your guys' schedule, if you, whenever you want to schedule something like this, we can make sure we've got everybody that's there, that needs to be there.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see happen.
I would do as soon as we can.
Well, I guess, I guess then my concern is with the letters, if it does hold the process up, do we want to submit it? That's really the...
That's the point, to make sure these things are addressed and put into the strike number three, but one and two, I think, are, we're on the high ground, and it should be in there for all the cooperating agencies to address.
Well, my opinion on it, I just, I think to hold something up that I don't have a full understanding of wouldn't be fair or just. If the tables were reversed, I would have the exact same opinion. It's, we make decisions and execute direction based on having all the facts and all the information. So, honestly, I feel that it's a little bit premature until we hear all sides from all parties, so that's my two cents.
Well, we can get with the BLM and the mine and schedule a workshop sooner than later, and then if you guys feel after you get the facts there that we need to submit that, we certainly can revise it and submit it.
I would be lucky, if we do that as soon as possible, then we all are on the same page.
That's what I'd like to see happen. You guys? Okay. All right, so do, I guess we don't need a motion?
No, I have my direction. We'll get, I'll get with John and we'll get Pam and...
Yeah, no, this sounds good. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Sure, we'll take a 10-minute break.
This conference unmuted.
Call this meeting back to order.
This conference will be recorded.
So, we'll call the meeting back to order. We tabled number eight, we're going to item nine, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, or give direction, pass a resolution, or take other appropriate action as needed for the county to declare a state of emergency for flooding.
So, Commission, I put this on, obviously, this was last week when we put this agenda together, and we had rain coming, and I wasn't sure where we would stand. Right now, the county's in pretty good shape. Fifteen of the 17 counties in the state the governor has declared a state of emergency in, Lander County not being one. Luckily, the only roads that we've had that are truly walked out and impassable right now are out in Monitor Valley, and I believe that everything else we have in Lander County is passable. So, some of the bordering counties, like Ny County, have some roads that are impassable that bump right up against the county line, and we're working with some of them neighboring counties, try to help them out where we can. So, I don't think we have to take any action on this, but it is on the agenda, and if we have anything really big happen, I would, I would like to have it maybe back on the next agenda in case we have a big runoff.
Does Board have any questions? Is there any public comments or questions?
Robert Quick, from the sheriff's office, just to let everybody know, the sheriff has been in contact with DEM to obtain sandbags free of charge, and we're looking to make arrangements to get those by the first of next week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess we don't need to do anything with that?
Do we need to look at anything, so if we hit in-between sessions to where, because this would come from Bert with us' support, to where he has the authorization to make a declaration? If the time hits in-between meetings or something to where we can't get on the agenda to approve, can we give him the, at this time, can we give the permission to do it if necessary?
I don't believe the county manager has power to make a declaration, do they?
Actually, in emergency situations, the sheriff is the one who's in charge. We have an old Lander County emergency operations plan that went into effect when I was a deputy DA back in '07. And as far as I know, that's what we're still operating on, at least I found my copy in... on, at least. I found my copy in, in the office. Um, and there's, there's a lot of authority that the sheriff has. There's a lot of inherent authority that a sheriff has from the, from jelly-old England, I mean, to the current day. Um, they can act in emergency situations. If my recollection of history is correct, when the San Francisco earthquake and fire back in the early 1900s happened, uh, the local sheriff was involved a lot, also the local militia, um, which would be National Guard these days. So, uh, you know, you can do things, and I believe you'll be able to handle it, um, without any added direction, but, uh, it probably helps to have it keep being on the agenda so that you can back up any actions, or tell them to change direction in terms of what you want to do.
Well, that's the thing, too, is that if the, the sheriff holds that power still, I mean, it'd just be a, a cooperation between him and the county manager, which, I mean, he's responsible for the day-to-day anyway, and just to get things, you know, any emergency type situation needs to be handled, to be handled, I believe, without us.
We, we can still do an, an emergency, um, meeting without a three-day notice, too.
Correct.
If we have, avoid a situation like that.
Which if we were having water in the streets again, that would definitely be an emergency.
Does the LUTS plan that they've just redone, to send in the CIR, does any of that cover any of this, Robert?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, I can't answer that directly. They are still updating that plan, as we speak, actually.
Because I know annually, you have to send updates and the renewal stuff to LUTS, uh, to CIR, but I was just wondering if, um, is that anything that has to do with this kind of stuff, or is that if, like, a train derailed?
Yeah, not realistically, that's more of a resource plan, as opposed to the EOP.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any more questions, comments?
Oh, I, maybe one more thing. Should we update our plan? Since it hasn't been done for a long period of something, that we start updating, getting that plan updated, since it hasn't been updated?
Oh, you mean the LUTS plan?
No, the plan he's talking about that hasn't been changed since he was here a long time ago. Is that something that should be done?
Looks like this.
Or is it fine the way it is? Just question, that's just a question.
It could be relooked at, if you'd like.
I think it'd be, I'd like to see it relooked at.
Yeah, you can just direct him to look at it, and I'll...
You want to... Do... I better get with the sheriff on that more, okay?
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move into item 10. Um, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the updated county policy and procedures and credit card agreement for Lander County credit card users.
This is just the agreement that we brought in front of you guys, and we made the changes for you to review. She's in a meeting over there at Perso.
Like I said earlier, the changes that I discussed, I, I like the writing on them as well. Uh, definitely support it.
Thank you.
Any questions, public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the updated current policy and procedure for credit card agreement with Lander County, for the Lander County credit card users.
Hold on a second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mike, a second from JR. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If aye, if it's unanimous. We'll move into 11, uh, correspondence, reports, future agenda items.
So, Ms. Kathy, I do have, um, NDAU and, um, the gentleman that did the report on the Sage Grouse format on the next agenda. So that, that update will be coming on the 13th.
Okay, there we go, thank you.
Where are we as far as looking at the, um, survey we were talking about for the employees?
Yes, we've done, uh, so there's a, um, mail, one second. We've not done a survey yet. We have a survey that's a...
No, no, I know, we were going to put on the agenda to talk about it.
Yes.
So that's all.
Would you like it back on?
Well, we haven't had it on yet.
No, we haven't approved anything yet. You guys would have to approve it. I think that it was like 13,000 to do that survey. So, um, I can put that back on if, if this commission would like that back on.
No, 13,000 dollars to do a survey, ridiculous. That's my two cents.
I, I don't know where the cost, where the cost came from. I guess that's why.
It came from Humboldt County. I, I reached out...
That's what they paid?
Yes.
13,000?
Correct.
Did they think it was worth it? Did they sign anything?
Hmm, I don't know. I, I could ask them if they, if they feel like it, uh, like it was beneficial, we can reach back out.
Because you were talking about a third-party survey, and that we did think, um, so at least put it on so we can talk about it.
Sure.
You got it.
And under the correspondence, did you also be, see the letter from NACAL in the correspondence, um, thanking us for our recent decision to, to rejoin?
And you'll be added to the list of representatives?
I have no, first, I didn't see, I didn't see you on it.
Patsy?
I did reach out to Vincent, so we should have added Patsy on there. Um, if it's not on the most recent one, I will reach back out and make sure.
That's all I see.
Yes, I, I got that in my mailbox.
Okay.
Uh, anything else on the agenda?
I, I missed the, you guys went through that so fast, and I don't hear so well, on 10. And I, I would just, oh, my name's Lenny Shepherd.
So, okay, hold on, hold on.
Anyway, can I, can I go back on that?
Hold on, let me reopen it, Lenny. So which agenda item was it? Was it 10?
Item 10.
On the credit cards?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to reopen, uh, for discussion of possible actions to approve, disapprove, the updated, uh, county policy and procedures and credit card agreement for Lander County credit card users. Okay, Lenny?
Okay, I, I just have a question. What is the new procedure? That's my question.
Well...
It's in that book.
Yeah, I don't know if it's completely, I mean, it's, it, we had an existing, uh, thing in place, but there was some questions, because people were going out and weren't bringing receipts in, and we're saying, that's not okay. If you do the county's credit card, you, it needs to have a receipt, right?
Right.
And, uh, and that's basically the updates that we made to that agreement from the last one that we had.
So, do they have to sign for the credit card, and...
You bet. Oh, yeah, they're signing, they're...
And you're liable for it?
Absolutely, they are, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was...
And also, if there's, if they don't use their tax-exempt card, then they're responsible to pay the taxes, since the county don't have to pay taxes, it's in here as well.
Right, just like for gas and...
Yeah, yeah, so if they go into Walmart, and they don't give them the Lander County tax-exempt card, and we pay tax, they're going to be responsible for that tax.
For reimbursing the counties.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's my only question.
Okay.
I just want to know what the procedure was, so...
Okay, thanks, Lenny.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll go back to correspondence, reports, future agenda items. Was there any more on that? Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
So JR made the motion second?
Second.
Mike's second, so I'm very...
Would I?
Aye.
Oh, oh. Would you guys like me to, uh, try to get on the agenda for, um, the, the Greek, uh, sending that letter? Or do you guys want to wait, you want to keep that on the agenda for the following agendas, or do you guys want to wait and not re-adjournize that letter to the BLM until we have that?
No, I think we need to wait until we have that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's get all the facts before we do it.
Okay, and before we adjourn, I need, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for public comment, but is there public comment for non-agenda items? Okay. Sheldon?
Sorry to get in the way of adjournment so quick.
Yeah, sorry.
Sheldon Mudd, Executive Director, Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority, for the record. Uh, I just wanted to make everybody aware this week that we did publish the video that we produced, uh, the promotional video for Lander County. So some of you have probably already seen that. Just bear in mind that, uh, when our commission put that together, I'm sorry, when our board put that together, the purpose was to really engage business and industry. So there are, there have, there hasn't been any, anybody mentioned this yet, but I'm afraid sometimes folks think there should be more tourist video, you know, things that, that apply to tourism, or things that apply to, um, you know, just the community and how wonderful it is. And we just, we just want to remind all of our communities that the purpose of this is to attract business and industry, but we are very proud of it, and we, uh, we think it turned out pretty well. So if you haven't looked at that, please do. It's on our website, under, under Lander County's community page. It's also on YouTube, and please, share it, share it as a county, share it as a, as individuals, but overall, I think it turned out well. If you think it was terrible, just please keep that to yourself, and we'll, uh, talk to me later about it, and we'll see what we can do next time. So just want to make everybody aware that it's out there, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the results. Thank you.
All right, Sheldon. Do we have any more public comment for non-agenda items? Okay, with that, we did have a motion and a second, and a unanimous for adjournment, so. Thanks everybody for attending the meeting. Well, I think we called for the vote, all right?
This conference is no longer being recorded.